Welcome to the May 7, 2024 Lowell City Council Meeting. We'll start with the prayer. Dear God, today's session opens. We pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please look the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and justice for all.
Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Mayor Rock.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Counselor Getchier.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Section 2, Mayor's Business, 2.1, communications and group participation. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Mercier, seconded by Counselor Noon. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 2.2, proclamation for AAPI Month. From the podium. Whereas the City of Lowell, Massachusetts recognizes and celebrates the rich cultural heritage, contributions, and achievements of Asian-American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander communities. The AANHPI community of Lowell contributes to the diversity, vibrancy, and economic prosperity of our city through their entrepreneurship, leadership, and cultural traditions. And whereas during the month of May, we join the communities across the nation to honor the history, culture, and achievements of Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders, and to recognize the important role in shaping the social, cultural, and economic fabric of our city and our nation. Now therefore, I, Daniel P. Rock, Mayor of the City of Lowell, along with my colleagues in the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Asian-American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander in Lowell, Massachusetts, and call upon all residents to join and celebrate the diversity, culture, and contributions of the community. Congratulations, and hopefully everybody has a great month. Thank you. Section 3, City Clerk, 3.1, manage of the City Council Regular Meeting, April 30th, for acceptance. The motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Getchier, seconded by Counselor Dakota, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Public hearing will get to a seven o'clock. Section 5, City Council motions, 5.1, Counselor Yem, request city manager to have the appropriate department update the city council on the plan to celebrate 2024, 4th of July, seconded by Counselor Scott. Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last year, 4th of July was a huge success, bringing thousands of people downtown, providing a boost to local businesses. But not all businesses were open that day, but the ones that were open had long lines and were full to capacity. A report said that one of the restaurants ran out of food. So I'm in support of the same venue, Mr. Manager, so through you, through the Mr. Managers, and then maybe working with the Chamber of Commerce, and then the vendors, the restaurant, and maybe we add the, you know, food truck, just like we did in Winterfest, and maybe some street performance like we did during the, during the Winterfest as well. So I really thank you and your team to do a really good job last year. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 5.2.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Mercier.
On 5.2, if there's no objection to the makers of the motion, could we combine 5.2 and 5.8? They're very similar. Thank you.
Sounds good. Motion by Counselor Mercier to 5.2 and 5.8, seconded by Counselor Dakota. 5.2, Counselor Leahy, request city manager to have the proper department place a surveillance camera at the Pine Hill School due to the increasing problem with trash dumping. And 5.8, Counselor Robinson, request city manager to look into what options are available to address the illegal dumping on Green Hill, Green Hill's school grounds. Both are seconded by Counselor Mercier, Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. Motion basically speaks for itself. There's been a lot of dumping out there. I don't know if there's a spot we can put cameras on, either entering or leaving, or... But it's really becoming a nuisance, so anything we can do over there would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. Yeah, motion does speak for itself as well, and I'd just like to thank DPW or whoever such as fast response. I got the call from the Assistant Principal, I believe, and within a matter of hours it was picked up, so thank you.
Counselor Getchier.
Thank you, Mayor Rock. Through you to Manager Golden. I know that we were gonna purchase more of the cameras. Did they come in, and how many do we have? Do you know that off the top of your head?
Mr. Manager, Mr. Shadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe we have 12 cameras. Lloyd over in DDS is working with Flock to get them installed. They should be installed very quickly. He's got a list that some of the inspectors have given him on all the illegal dumping, but we could definitely use more, too.
Are there more coming on back or anything, or is that the end is 12?
We have 12. I don't, we don't have any more coming.
Okay. All right, and so they're all in, and we're ready to go whenever.
Yes.
Start instituting, so this is something that could be done sooner rather than later for the council motion? Thank you.
Counsel Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll thank these two counselors for putting up these two motions for these two schools through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Assistant City Manager. Even though the other schools are not listed, have you heard of any other dumping at any of the other schools at all throughout the city? And if that were to be, could we just make an encompassing motion to look at the other schools and see if cameras are warranted as well?
Mr. Shadell. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Pine has been a problem, you know, where it's hidden, I feel like that gets targeted a lot. So that one's at the top of the list. The Green Hill, that was the first time I've come across an illegal dumping there, but we're open to wherever, but the Pine is definitely the biggest problem for illegal dumping.
Good, great, good. Thank you for the answer, and if you could be, I know that you're always proactive anywhere, but have you hear of any other school that might be facing this issue? If you could just go ahead and, you know, look at it and see if, you know, a camera's warranted, please do so as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These two motions are a perfect example of what we're all talking about, the need for cameras and the need to catch these perpetrators that are ruining our city by dumping illegally wherever they seem fit, in schools, parking lots, over embankments, along Aiken Street, along 110, along First Street. We have a very beautiful city. We have DPW employees that go out and do the best they can, but it's hard to keep up when people are just dumping things all over this city. We do need to catch them, and we need to find them severely. We need to set a precedent and say, this is what's gonna happen to you if you dump stuff all over our city. So we need more cameras, and we need to be vigilant to catch these perpetrators. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. I agree with my colleague, and, you know, fortunately, I got to ride around with the manager on Saturday morning, and we went through the district in Centerville. And we saw some of the stuff, and, I mean, just spitballing some ideas. So I think there are some, outside of cameras, there are some potential opportunities out there. I think what that looks like, hopefully in the report, we have some more information, but even something to the point where people pay to dispose of large-scale or location, they could dump these large-scale items, that we work out something so where our people don't have to go off the beaten path and track down large-scale items that people are just illegally dumping. So, I mean, I think we do have a set of eyes on it. Everyone's well aware of this situation, and hopefully we can come up with a solution that works for everybody. Thanks.
Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to actually mention this later on in response to the speed sign motion, but I do have a question. I don't know if you could answer it now or not. If not, you can come back with an answer. But the speed signs and the cameras, the video cameras like this, are they eligible under the public safety funds with ARPA? Do you know that?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counsel, that's an idea that we definitely float by with ARPA. You know, many of the things, sometimes we'll receive ideas like this, but we want to make sure that, I know other cities and towns may be doing it, but there's always a clawback with ARPA, so that's something we can check. I see Mr. Flynn that is here right now, so we'll make sure we check with that.
Thank you.
Both motions, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, both motions pass. 5.3, Counsel Robinson, request city manager to have the proper department provide a detailed report on how many households we are providing solid waste, recycling, and yard waste pickup, breaking down number of housing units, seconded by Counselor Mercier. Counsel Robinson.
Motion speaks for itself.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 5.4, Counsel Robinson, request city manager to have the Lowell Police Department look at Bridge Street and VFW intersection at Lowell High School to special time and determine recommendations to facilitate vehicular traffic and heavy pedestrian traffic during this period, seconded by Counsel Noon. Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. Quite a bit of residents in Centerville especially, and some not in Centerville have reached out. I guess what it is, is, you know, you get large volumes of kids, older kids that look like high school age, because I've asked, you know, are we talking younger, mainly high school age, and around the time of dismissal, it's just influx. And so with the VFW, it does kinda cause some traffic situations over there. So anything that LPD would recommend, I'd welcome. Thank you.
Counsel Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With all due respect to Counsel Robinson, Ms. Holtman has done a tremendous job. I've heard nothing but compliments from Lowell High School, Mr. Fiatto and his staff concerning the signals at VFW. They've done a tremendous job with a lot of walkers going through there. Years ago, we couldn't have said that. So kudos to her and her department, and all due respect, Counsel Robinson. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 5.5, Counsel Robinson, request city manager to provide an update on city council's ability to donate any salary for which they are not allowed to be compensated to any organization of their choosing, seconded by Counsel Yem. Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. This came up a while ago, and I still haven't heard a response, and so any information back would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy and Counsel Mercier.
Thank you. It's really not any counselors' purview to donate a salary that they can't accept, so the answer would just be you can't direct where you want it to go. If you can't collect a, if you're not allowed to collect a salary, then you just don't collect it, and it's up to the manager's office to do with what they want with it. So, I mean, that's the answer, that's the short answer.
Get a report from the manager? Is that okay? Get a report from the manager?
Yeah, you can. I'm just saying, that's the short of it. It's just, it's not our purview to donate it. We can't accept it. It's not our business.
There's requests, city manager, I request that.
As the maker of the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Mercier.
Well, here's the shot of it for me. If it's good enough for me, it's good enough for you. If I can't do it, you can't do it. That's my philosophy. In the past, there have been counselors, school committee people, that have not been able to get their salary, but they were able to donate it to charity. I don't have a problem with that, but if it's good enough for so-and-so, then it's good enough for somebody else. I mean, we don't pick and choose and say, you can have it, but you can't have it. The person is doing the job. He's not taking it for himself, but if he wants to give it to charity, all the more blessing for that charity that he wants to give it to. That's my opinion. I don't have a problem with this motion. That's just how I feel about it.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. All right, so then I'd like to amend the motion and include, can have the solicitors' office include a path forward to be able to donate. Again, if some of the councils that aren't eligible to receive compensation currently, we don't know what we'll have in the future, and if no one received it in the past, their earning, just as I am, just as any of my colleagues sit next to me, and if there's a law that prevents them from being able to receive that salary, I get that. I'm not opposing that. We've discussed that. But that doesn't mean that they should not be compensated, and if they can't personally receive that funding, I think it's their discretion to either leave it with the city council or donate it to whoever they choose. And so can you please provide a path forward for anybody that might not be eligible to receive a salary to be able to donate that salary? And I believe this message, this motion was requested from the manager, so I didn't really...
Counsel Robinson, let's get the official answer from the manager first. Based on that response, maybe you can go in different directions? That make sense?
Yep, so I need a second on that motion.
Yeah, it's already seconded, I believe, by Counsel Yem.
Thank you.
On the original motion, Mr. Clark, we do a roll call, because I believe we have a recusal on this one, so.
Mr. Mayor, could I be recused from this vote?
Yeah, we do a roll call. Counsel Getchier, yes. Also, as well, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Mayor Rock.
Mr. Mayor, I could've named names, but I chose not to. I could back up my, what I said with names. I don't want to do that. Thank you.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Mayor Chow, I mean Counsel Chow, sorry. Counsel Dakota, Counsel Getchier, Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
5.6, Counsel Robinson, request city manager to have the proper department consider speed bump installation on 18th Street to curb the speeding issues in the area, seconded by Counsel Mercier.
We've had great success, I have to say. First, I'm not sure if everyone's aware, I went to Billings on Saturday morning, and I personally saw a very talented, I mean, resident transportation engineer, mind you, carrying panels with the group of DPW doing the installation. And, I mean, it's, I would like to say that because I've received quite a bit of calls of people saying, I love it. I want my street, my street, my street. I want people to be mindful, and through you, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, can we please get the traffic engineer to the podium, just so if she doesn't mind, briefly explain the process involved, because I've had to repeat the process many times over, how we look at a location, we do data, collect data, see if it fits, and then the installation. And these are a little bit pricey, and so, I mean, we're doing this, again, as part of the data gathering, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Hi. Yes. We did put out the temporary speed humps. What we did is we took data on Billings Street last year and noticed that there was a speeding issue on that street, so now we have before data, and we'll collect data while they're out this summer, and we'll be able to then have a basis to say, speed humps work, they are doing with their job, and then we can move forward with permanent installations, not only on Billings Street, but in other places as roads are repaved, which is the best time to put speed humps out. So, and any installation, it's good to get data, confirm that there is a problem. There are certain roads that will not be eligible because of slope. We don't want to cause more problems when we're trying to solve problems. So, that's what we're doing right now.
Should also be noted that Ms. Holt was carrying the temporary speed hump placement herself as well.
DPW did most of the work. Did a few.
Thank you very much, and I just wanted to be clear to the public, it's, we're not, this isn't a situation where it's the squeaky wheel necessarily gets degrees and we're picking and choosing. It's a matter of, there is a process in place for the Safe Streets Program that's being implemented, and it does take the collection of data. There are plenty of streets throughout the city that have been identified already, and many more will be identified, and hopefully, if this program's successful in Billings, you'll see them in your neighborhood shortly as well. So, thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 5.7, Counsel Robinson, request city manager to have the proper department look into installing a stop sign at Beacon and Willow Street, seconded by Counsel Getchier. Counsel Robinson.
Motion speaks for itself.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 5.9, Counsel Robinson and Counsel Getchier, request city manager to work with the University of Lowell, Lowell Youth Baseball and Softball and Roberto Clemente League to establish a plan on a date for a tournament utilizing Lashar Park. No second needed. Counsel Getchier.
Thank you, Mayor Rock.
Oh, excuse me. Do we have registered speakers on this, Mr. Clerk?
I don't.
Can I make a motion to suspend the rules to allow the speakers, please?
Motion by Counsel Robinson, suspend the rules, seconded by Counsel Mercier. All in favor, say aye. Opposed. Name and address, ma'am.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Maria Claudio. Soy de la Liga Roberto Clemente, y ella es mi secretaria. Ella es mi intérprete.
Hi. My name is Maria Claudio. I'm Gretchen Sanchez. I'm the secretary and the interpreter for Ms. Maria.
Yo hice algo por escrito, que ella lo va a leer. Le doy las gracias a todos los city council por pensar en nosotros, especialmente a Eric y a Cory por hacer esta moción hacia nosotros. Gracias.
She wants me to just read this, and she wants to thank the council for welcoming us, especially to Cory and Eric. She said, "Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and all the councilmen, Mr. Cory Robinson and Eric, for this motion. Like every year, we receive delegations from different countries and cities here in Lowell, such as Dominican Republic, Puerto Rico, Colombia, New York, Rhode Island, and many more. This year, we will once again have part of these delegations for our invitational tournaments to be held from July 18 to July 22 at the North Common, and it will be perfect if these games will be held there in the Park of the Spinners. This year, we will receive three delegations from Dominican Republic, two from New York, Rhode Island, Lawrence, and Boston, in the 9 to 10, 11 to 12, and 14 to 17 categories. Are several teams that we are going to have, but it will be good for the 14 to 17 category to play in that beautiful park, and for our young people to agree to that request. Last year, we have problems with parks here, and we don't want the same thing to happen again. Thank you again, and made this request to open the games and play there will be achieved. This year, the Roberto Clemente League will also participate in four invitational tournaments in New York and Rhode Island, representing our city of Lowell, which we want to have all your support for our young people who are the future of this country. Thank you."
Just save the address for the record, please. We heard her name. Address.
Her address.
Just her address. That's all. For the record.
My address?
Yes, please.
Sorry, my address, 219 Jackson Street, apartment 311. De la Liga tiene un P.O. box. Por eso no están llegando carros.
Thank you, that's all right.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Rita, for the support.
Counsel Getchier.
Thank you, Mayor Rock. When we went to sell Lashar to the university, I think this city council pushed for this type of use through the city manager, and we wanted to get the community onto that field because it's such a diamond. And when you look at the volunteerism that all of these coaches and staffs and everyone do throughout the year, just to get these events together, to get the kids out and into events, this is, the least we can do is to try to get everybody together over at Lashar and say thank you. And I think when you get out there, it's a family pride, it's a community pride thing to get to go play on that field. I remember the first time my son got to play on that field, and the smile that it brought to his face to be able to go out and play on a field that makes him feel like they're in the major leagues. So, I can't thank the volunteers, all the city counselors, the manager, his staff, for all their hard work in helping us get this put together for the kids in the city. And, you know, maybe we can put around Robin together a tournament or something like that, where all the leagues get together and they can all just enjoy it together. And last year was such a great event, and I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for helping us get this done. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd just like to echo pretty much what my colleague said on this, the coalmaker, and thank you to the speakers. I think it's another great opportunity. I think if we can put a group of youth together that, with that one common theme, baseball, and just let the families and friends come out, and the residents come out and enjoy a day at the ballpark with our own residents and our own kids, that'll be great. And welcome as many guests that want to come down, too. You know, when we tried it the first time, everything wasn't up and running, but I think everyone had a very good time, and I look forward to, hopefully it works with everyone's scheduling, and I think the sooner we can start working on this, the better. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 5.10, Counsel Dakota, request city manager to update the efforts to consolidate city and school departments, seconded by Counsel Getchier. Counsel Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to withdraw the motion.
Motion withdraw. Counsel Getchier, you're excited with that? Approved by Counsel Getchier. Couple minutes, 4:00, 7:00 o'clock. 6:00, communications from the city manager, 4:00, 7:00, sorry. 6.1, motion response, a premium pay retirees. Counsel Getchier.
Thank you, Mayor Rock. During the uncertain times of COVID, we had employees go beyond to try to keep us all safe and try to make sure that the city stayed operational, and this is one way I thank the manager for thanking them and getting this done, because it's important that we say thank you to people who go above and beyond during times that are tough, and I think that everyone else got it, and I just think that this is a great gesture from the city to the retirees, and I thank you for getting this done, Mr. Manager.
Counsel Mercier, then Counsel Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager. This was a motion of fairness, and you were a fair person to allow this to happen. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. I received a bunch of calls on this over the weekend, and I'd like to thank Counselor Getchier for fighting and putting this forward. I think a lot of people, it's not a ton of money, but it's the whole principle, that, you know, hey, I put in that sweat equity. I worked for the city during this period or a partial period of this, and why would I be excluded? And I thank the administration for finding a way to come through and cover those people. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counselors, thank you all very much. Each and every one of you had talked about how important this was, and we had committed the administration and committed to getting this done, but this really wouldn't happen, quite frankly, if it wasn't for the efforts of our ARPA team. Mr. Flynn, thank you very much to you, Jess and Emily, for really making this stuff happen. We've put a lot on you in the past year and a half, and there's more to come, as you know, but I just want to say thank you very much to you, sir, for all the hard work, and of course, the auditor's office is checking, checking the list, not once but twice, to make sure that all is well. So thank you very much to the auditor's office as well for making this all happen. And counselors, it's, we had told you we'd get here. We finally did, after we, we've been at this for, oh, about a year and a half, going through all of this with wage equities and fairness, and this was, I believe, the final piece. So thank you for your patience, and thank you for the support of this.
Counsel Getchier.
Just one more question through you to Manager Golden. Does this include anybody who worked during it that left during that period of time? Or, I'm just not sure, because I didn't just see the breakdown, so, like, if someone had worked and then had left, would they be included in this?
This would be, thank you, this would be the retirees during that timeframe, so if they worked, you know, eight months, they'd be prorated, so on and so forth. If they actually left, we didn't, we did not include that.
Thank you.
Back to the general public hearing, it's beginning 7:00. 4.1, ordinance to amend Chapter 272-30 Drain Layer Licensing Regulations. Second reading. I don't know if it's a second reading, any motion, I'm sorry, but it's, open up for But it's open up for those in favor. Those in favor? In favor? In favor? Motion to amend is closed. All in opposition? 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 That motion to amend is also closed. Motion to adopt by Council Getchea, seconded by Council Janess. Questions or comments? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor Rook?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
Counsel Getchea?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
That's 11 yeses.
Back to motion responses. B, AK Street Bridge and Bankment. Council Robinson?
Thank you. Area looks a million times better. Appreciate it. And again, it's one of many, but keep plugging away. Thank you.
Motion response C, Building Street. Council Robinson?
Thank you. Again, I've heard nothing but positive feedback over there, and it's kind of dangerous because now everyone wants it. As we just described the process, I think, hopefully, it achieves the outcome that we're all looking for. Thank you.
Motion response D, Eagle Park. Council Robinson?
Thank you. It's encouraging to see that this is a candidate for future improvements. I also am aware that we're looking to improve the lighting situation potentially over there, which will be the low-hanging fruit. And then, you know, if we can do anything as outlined in the report, maybe some, you know, crosswalk situation with lights or whatever it may be, because, again, high pedestrian traffic area, but I think the lights are going to do a lot to help illuminate that whole area. Thank you.
Motion response E, Lowell Street. Council Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the traffic engineer for the response. I do think this was brought forward, the intersections off of Lowell Street because of the speeding going down Crisman, G Nav. So, I do think the speed bump installation will negate part of the reason for the motion to begin with. So, I would just thank you for the response.
Motion response F, Shore Speedlights. Council Scott?
Thank you. I already made my comment earlier on that, just if we can find out whether or not ARPA funding can be used for these. Thank you.
Motion response G, Reservoir Speed Study. Council Robinson?
Thank you. Thank our engineer, Ms. Altman, and Yvonne Baez Rose, and this report is kind of shining a light on, we do have an issue with speed, I guess, in these areas certain times. So, I think the next phase of this is interpreting the data and translating into some mechanisms that will address this. Thank you.
Council Getchea?
Through you, Mayor Rook, to the manager, do we have a list of streets that have had studies done that are outside the purview of the 25 mile an hour speed limit law, ordinance that we made?
Just my own recollection, I thought we tried that, and Council Dakota destroyed it. I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure he had a diatribe saying, "Don't touch any other street in the city that's not affected by 25 miles per hour."
I'm just wondering if there's a list of them, because, you know, when the police go out, how do they enforce the 25 mile an hour? If something has already had a study done and it's, say, 35, do they have a list that says, this is, you know, this or that? Is there a list made up so that everybody can see which streets those are, so residents actually could look and see that as we do the study? That's all.
I would second that motion, Council Getchea, for a list, Mr. Manager. Makes sense? The police can back to us as well? All right.
Thank you.
Just keep, keep Council Dakota.
I'd like to make that in the form of a motion, that we get a list together of all the streets that don't fall under the 25 mile an hour list.
All in favor say aye. opposed motion passes. The motion to accept and place on file all responses by Counsel Noon, seconded by Counsel Yem. All in favor say aye. opposed motion passes. Votes to the city manager, 7.1. Vote, authorize city manager execute lease agreement with Fortune Wannalancet LLC. We have the full reading and second reading by title. Authorize the city manager behalf of the city of Lowell to enter into a lease agreement with Fortune Wannalancet LLC for the property located at 660 Suffolk Street in Lowell. Motion to adopt by Council Getchea, seconded by Council Leahy. Questions, comments? Council Getchea?
Through you to Manager Golden, I want to thank whoever in the staff put this together because when you look at it and you start dividing, it's about $19.50 a square foot for rental space, which, when you look throughout the city and you start looking at some of the other properties, the average is about $19 a square foot. And this comes with parking that, I'm concerned about the parking piece because of the back and forth to the AOT, and it says that transportation will be provided for the employees, but, and there's only five spots guaranteed currently in that area, and the other 15 are in the parking garage. And then it says they have 45 visitor spots. I guess my question is, are the 45 visitor spots in the AOT, is that where they'll be?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Councilors, this is an exciting time. I am going to invite Ms. Norton and Ms. Donovan up to speak to this because I really think that as a council and as a city, we need to know more of what's happening when it comes to the youth in the city. But as far as the parking, that is upfront, but I'll let Ms. Norton explain it and Ms. Donovan explain the program, if that's okay.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Manager. The visiting parking, from what we understand, there's a lot right across from the entrance to 650 Suffolk Street, so that's where the visiting parking, which is great because right now we don't have free visitor parking. If you were to visit the career center, you have to pay on-street or in the garage.
Could that be separated in between, because employees going back and forth? Could that be like 20 for visitors and 25 for employees? I don't know how many employees are down there, but when you start looking at going to AOT and coming back, and one's designated for visitors, but they say there's only five spots for your employees. I don't know how many employees you have, but...
There's 14.
Yeah, so it seems like nine would have to go there.
Seasonal, way more.
Yeah, so could that be changed in this? So, it says, okay, you have 14 dedicated spots and reduce the amount of visitor spots? Because in here, it seems upside down, a little bit.
That location, Council, that Ms. Norton speaks about, it's a lot of spots over there. It's, well, if there was 50 employees, there's still enough spots for it.
I'm just looking at the contract, that's all.
Yeah, I agree with you. But if that's the answer that we're getting...
Heather Donovan, hi. Thank you very much. The AOT and the transportation there is actually the same walk that we currently take from the John Street Garage, so it's not really a loss for our staff to park there if they needed to. But on days when we don't have visitors, they can use the visitor lot or the on-street parking, which is also free over there.
I'm just thinking about people who like to park close.
Well, they're all Gen Z people, so...
We're all Gen Z. So, we're giving segues out. The other thing is that there's an amount that needs to be obviously done before we get there, and it's $115,155. It's such a dialed-in amount that it sounds like somebody got an estimate on work that needs to be done. The only thing that I don't understand is why didn't they add that 5% tenant fee inside of that fee rather than spell it out this way? Because if it goes over, you're going to pay 5% of the overage, which realistically shouldn't happen.
There's not a lot of build-out that needs to happen. It's really just the entrance to Hale Street that's the big project. The rest, I mean, even if we had to say, well, don't close that reception window space because it will go over the, we can say, fine, that's fine. You don't have to do that, you know? So, I think we're going to be well under that amount.
And there's one other thing that it says in here. It says the tenant improvement loan at 12% on straight-line basis. Why would we take a loan? It's just a cut-and-paste type of contract standard, yeah. And the thing I do love about this contract is that, and I think this is great for everyone, Exhibit C, where it says the cleaning is provided by the owner of the property. So, we don't need any custodians, we don't need anything, it's all on them. So, right there, it saves probably, you know, a custodial staff person that would go to the city, which hopefully, we hold them accountable for cleaning.
Yeah.
Because it looks like, it says right in here, they're vacuuming, they're dry-mopping, and they're going to do dust horizontal surfaces, and they'll vacuum, and it just seems to be very well spelled out. So, I do, I thank whoever put this together. I think it's a phenomenal piece. I just was wondering about the visitors parking, and you guys took care of that. So, thank you again for all of your hard work.
Yep. I'll let Heather talk about the program more in detail.
Thank you. So, for those of you who don't know, the Mass Hire Lowell Young Adult Career Center serves young people between 14 to 25 years of age. We do a lot of programming. I have bronchitis, sorry. So, if I stopped to cough, that's why. We do a lot of programming for young people. We have a high-site GED classroom right on-site. We do occupational training programs at no cost to young people, and we do many subsidized work programs, as well as in-school and out-of-school skill-building programs. So, really, our goal is to improve the, sorry, improve the workforce in the city and really start to bring some of these young people into careers that will benefit them and the city as a whole. We serve well over 600 young people a year, and this would make us the largest young adult career center in the state. So, we're very excited about that, and I just want to thank you for allowing us to come here and potentially be that.
Thank you. Council Getchea?
I just add one more thing. In the, we were looking at additional space before we were ever aware that UMass was doing all that wonderful work over at Wannalancet. So, now we're going to be located there with all those companies, you know, in the middle of all of that, and we're hoping that we can partner with some of those companies for internships for our young people that are not going on to post-secondary, but, you know, can be exposed to all of this wonderful activity that's going to be going on there. So, really looking forward to that. Thank you.
Roll call. Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
Counsel Getchea?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
11 yeses.
Section 8, ordinance from the city manager, 8.1, create deputy chief informational officer position and salary for MIS. First reading, the motion to refer to a public hearing on May 21, 2024 by Counsel Leahy, seconded by Counsel Janess. All in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion passes. 10, transportation subcommittee, Council Dakota, today or next week?
Next week. We'd like to send it to the Law Department as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Section 10, petitions, 10.1, true property damage. The motion to refer to the Law Department for a report and recommendation by Council Robinson, seconded by Counsel Scott. All in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion passes. 11 announcements. Council Robinson?
Thank you. I have to say, I attended the Sunneville Neighborhood Action Group meeting last night, and it was probably one of the more informative meetings I've attended, period. We had, first, the Rec Department, and I'm not sure if the residents are aware, but please do yourself a favor if you can and hop on their website. There is a link off the city's website, and they go into detail and explain all of the program and that they're offering coming up for the summer. Their website is lowma.myrec.com, and I mean, they're offering camps, they're offering swim lessons will be coming up for all residents, free. There's no charge. I believe June 30, they'll be given 300 tickets to Canterbury Lake Park away. So, I mean, there's a ton of things that our Rec Department is, has in the pipeline for our residents. And I believe, age 5 to 13, there is still availability at Gage Summer Program. There's even summer programs offered from Lowell Rec for after summer school. So, I mean, please do yourself a favor if you can, hop on, and there's tons of information available, as well as, at the meeting last night, nice presentation from the Bike Connector, who's doing amazing things in the community as well. Their model is based, they're located on, I believe it's Kirk Street or Lee Street, Lee Street, 47 Lee Street. Appointments only, but they try to get everybody that wants a bike a bike, especially the kids. And their model is, you come down, you make an appointment, you have to work to repair that bike and rebuild that bike, and it's yours. So, I mean, there's another great organization doing things in the community that I think people could take advantage of, and it might be a fun summer project for a family. And then, I'd like to say thank you to Vinfen and the opening of that new Crisis Stabilization Center over in the old Solomon's Mental Health. We had a very informative presentation from them last night at the meeting as well. And again, it's another example of Lowell has expanded in so many areas, and it's all resident-focused. So, I just like to announce that and let people know, there's tons of stuff. And a lot of this information you can probably find on the city's website or links to it as well. So, thank you.
Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I would have wanted to do a pointed personal privilege on this one. It probably doesn't belong on this council floor, but I would ask if you would allow me to say that someone hacked my Facebook, and they messaged my neighbor across the street, that's how I found out about it, and a few of my friends, and they said that I was in, I was pretending I was myself, saying that I got throat surgery, and that they removed my voice box and my larynx and everything else. As you can see, I can speak, so this is not true. So, if anybody is asked to be a friend, this is not me that's doing it. And it's a shame that someone can pretend that they're you. I don't know what they're going to say next, but I have someone looking into it that might be able to figure out who this is. They're assuming my identity, and I don't want to be responsible for anything that they say. But there are people out there that want to hurt other people. So, if you get a text from me, I'm in pretty good shape. Thank you.
Council Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tough fall, those two. Sorry, I missed out on CNN. I was over at Pawtucketville. Sounds like you had a great meeting. And I, too, got the friend request from not Rita, so it is going around. So, I'll second that with my IT hat on. If anybody sees that, just block that and report it. What I wanted to mention was the professional women's hockey team had a great game on Saturday, won, made the playoffs. So, the playoffs are coming to Lowell next week. They're playing Montreal. After the game, there were about 6,000 people who came to the game. After the game, downtown was packed, every restaurant was full. It was so great to see. So, hopefully, they can keep that going. So, congrats to them, and, you know, if you can, catch a game.
Council Getchea?
Thank you, Mayor Rook. This Saturday is the 7th Annual Points of Lights Cultural Celebration. It's at the Equimercal Plaza from 5 to 10 p.m. There'll be food, dance, arts, drinks, and many of Lowell's cultures.